Open public comment. Raymond Biet? Justin Linholm?
I might as well go now, it won't take that long. I'd like to talk about that 1,600 acre tract up in Chittenden. And I just, there's a red flag here. I've done a lot of real estate transactions myself. Two years ago, I sold a piece of high mountain, large acreage to the governor of Kentucky. That was from New Hampshire, the land I own. A few years before that, I sold another piece of large acreage, high mountain tract, to the state of Vermont. I've sold a piece of real estate over a million dollars, one piece. Never did I go that quickly. This is, real estate is not like a car. I've found, over the years, that dealing with real estate, I want to get all the facts in a row. This takes months when I do it. Maybe you folks can do it faster, but it always took me months to get the values in order. And it's not just a simple appraisal. If you have a simple comparison appraisal, other lands, they're usually just raw mountain land. Yours has a wind resource, you have a very valuable water resource, and what makes it really valuable is proven. Twenty-five million gallons a year coming right out of the ground. I sent you folks an email on that. You also have a huge recreational resource. That place is used constantly. I was up there the other day. There was somebody headed in on snowshoes. Somebody had already gone in with trekking poles the day before. We go in off of the federal forest land. There's a place back there called the Smoking Tree where you have an intersection of three trails. That doesn't include the long trail. These things should be considered. This is going to go from heavily used, if it's sold to Mr. Gerlach, it'll go from a heavily used recreational resource, which is extremely important where it lies, and it will go to a completely private, nobody allowed in resource. That is probably your biggest and best thing you have up there is your recreational resource. I got brought up with business people all my life, and they said, "Sometimes you do well in this world, but other times you should do right." And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to speak to that, too. I've got to be a little bit late.
Okay, let me go through the list here, Roy.
Podium?
Yes. Yeah, if we could use the podium. Mr. Buehle?
That's fine, I may have to go.
Doug Todd?
Yes, I'm here to speak to the same.
Sure, if you'd use the podium, please.
My name's Douglas Todd, I'm the trail coordinator for the Chittenden Ambers Snow Wheel Club. Speaking to what Mr. Linholm said about the recreational use. I don't think the club, or myself, are here to say whether you should or shouldn't sell it. That's up to you, and if it's financially in your favor, then we'll support that, I guess. My concern would be, if it does go to a private landowner, if we're shut off, that's our major corridor trail through, we would probably lose half of our trail system, which would put us in danger of losing our total trail system with the state of Vermont, with vast, our grooming equipment. We need to have a certain amount of trails to maintain it, continue using it. We had another big landowner, private sale in Chittenden a few years ago, that the private landowner made us a lot of promises that were not kept. So we have, we do have some concerns. We've had a good relationship with Proctor, I think, we've never had any issues. So I guess our question would be, if you do decide to sell it to a private landowner, would there be a chance to get some easements in place before that happens, so we could maintain that trail system? So that was our one concern, our one question.
Sure, well, we appreciate that. And we're partway through the thing here, so, but I, yeah, let's...
We were a little late to the table, but...
No, we'll, we've got a lot to consider here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Peter Welch?
Just listening.
Just listening, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Roy Piltcher, and I was a resident of Proctor for 43 years, and a homeowner for 40 years. Currently, I, that's in Proctor, currently I live at the Gables in Rutland. I was a high school teacher here in Proctor for 19 years. I taught five academic subjects, from algebra II through precalculus, to calculus, to geometry and physics. I also taught driver education for 18 years. And in the summers, I taught adventure education, in which I taught students how to orienteer. And we spent, and we did 30 miles on the long trail each week, and two overnight campings. And I also taught surveying. The 19 years of my teaching here in Proctor were the most productive years of my professional life, which included three years of engineering and 33 years of teaching. As a homeowner, on Gibbs Street, one of the few private houses built in Proctor here before the, those built as Chitton Park after the war, the house I owned was built by the Keeper of the Poor in 1880 approximately. And in the basement, there was a cistern to collect water, which kind of indicated that there were times in Proctor when water was scarce, and homeowners had to collect their own water. The original occupants of Sutherland Falls and Proctor originally relied on the springs here. Big Trees Spring was one of them, but as the company grew and the town increased in size, the springs became inadequate. So there was, I believe, where the swimming pool is now, the Chittenden Farm, and then Reynolds Reservoir, were each sources of water for the town. However, these proved inadequate during times of drought, and so the townfathers had to find new resources for water. And they found that resource at Kiln Brook in 1903, on the Holden property, and they took out water rights in the, on Kiln Brook and Furness Brook during about that time. So this land has belonged to the townspeople of Proctor, to everybody who lives in this town. They are owners of this particular property. Now, in order to maintain and make sure that the supply of water was as good and as pure as possible, the townfathers bought 1,650 acres as part of the watershed, so that that water supply could be guaranteed in as good a condition as possible. When I lived in Proctor here for the 45, 43 years, that was the supply of water that I actually used in my family, but unfortunately, the state is lycet. I found otherwise, so now the town has to go to a well in the valley. I appreciate the board is doing due diligence, and I think it's important that they do. And some of the things that I would suggest that due diligence involves, the first thing is that the board is a representative of the people. And this is a vital property that the people of Proctor actually own. And I think before anything is actually done with this land, I really do think that the town should know, and I think probably at the next town meeting, the people of Proctor should be really made aware of this resource before any action is taken on it. As the previous speaker said, this property is not like a dumpster, is not like a front-end loader, or a dump truck, or a sewer. Essentially, it is a living, breathing organism. Any rate, so, the town, the select board and the town of people, basically, we have been custodians of this for 116 years, and there is no need to, in a short order of time, to make up one's mind what to do with it. The current community of Proctor, and I'd say the progeny, too, those people who are in the schools now, who may become Proctor residents, need to be fully informed, as I indicated. I said, "This ecosystem comprising 650 acres is alive and reproduces itself. It's not like any other town property." This basically reproduces itself. Trees grow, trees die, trees fall down, and they renew themselves. Plants come up, plants die, and they renew themselves. So this is a living, breathing community in the, up there in Chittenden. And I think when you think about what to do with it, that's a vitally important fact when you exercise due diligence. The efficacy of the replication and health of this ecosystem has been determined in the past and will be determined in the future, for better or for worse, according to how you dispose of it. And as the previous speaker said, disposing of it to an individual may not be the best for this particular living, breathing organism. I would advocate that the board consider seriously, when they sell this land, to sell it to some institution or as public ownership, because public ownership offers two main things. It offers management and access. The first thing about the management, if this goes to a public institution, like the Vermont Land Trust, or the Center of Vermont, or the Nature Conservancy, is that this land will be maintained in its entirety. One of the biggest problems that is causing the death of, not the death, but the diminishing of wildlife, birds, anything else, is basically fragmentation. Fragmentation is the death knell and the destruction of habitat. So the first and most important thing is that if this goes to public ownership, then it'll be maintained as an entirety, and that, to me, is major importance. Also, management to provide clean water for people, fish, and the community of rock-dependent organisms. Although there is an abundance of water, the purity of that water is important, and that land can be managed to make sure that that water is, purity of that water is maintained. Management to provide healthy forests, forests that sustain diversity, not merely to be logged, but to sustain diversity of plant species and animal species. Forest management nowadays is highly critical just of logging for the sake of logging. One logs in order to maintain special species, and so that's important if you have management. It's not just done for the timber resources. And management to provide a corridor for terrestrial animals. It's very important here in Vermont that corridors are maintained, and if that is maintained as a whole, then terrestrial animals, such as bear, such as moose, they need these corridors in order to move through to other feeding areas. Also, management to provide human access. And to me, human access is critical, as the previous speaker indicated. Access for people, to fish, to hunt, to hike, to snowshoe, it has been done already, to bird, to botanizer, and to butterfly. Public access can do all those things. Access for archaeological and scientific inquiry, including vernal pool studies, forest bird monitoring studies, mountain top studies, and so forth. So to me, what I would stress to the board in showing due diligence, is just not a matter of dollars and cents. It's a matter of, what do we do with this living, vital ecosystem that replicates itself? And if it, is it maintained and intact and in public access, then I think the future of that land will be beneficial to all Vermonters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Oh, we don't have any guests listed.
You're gonna let Bill speak?
Huh?
You're gonna let Bill speak?
Oh, yes. Bill?
Well, I was only gonna speak because I wanted to address, at least as I told you, there'd be more items on the agenda and discussions, and John wanted me to be here, to be able to answer any questions, to be able to respond, offer anything. I don't have any more comments, other than what was already said. And I certainly don't want to get into any kind of sense that the choice is between preserving land and water and some other alternative, which is not good to it. I mean, I work real hard to get state parks, for people to donate. I'm involved in lots of conservation efforts. I know the forester who's worked on the forest plan for John's existing property. It's all under the best of management plans, so I don't want to get into any arguments about what that is. It's an economic choice, and either decide that you want to sell it, or you don't want to sell it. Then, I, if you want to sell it, I'm here to sort of offer some more things and talk about that when the time comes up.
Thank you. Sorry to jump ahead here. Good stuff. I think the new thing that Stan just mentioned, our new streetlights are in, and that's something we've been without for, well, four-plus years. Glad to see those back up.
I would like to add special thanks to LaFaso, and electrical, Brad and his son, who just made it happen, as fast as they can make it happen.
Yes.
And they're out there tonight making sure that they're on.
I was impressed.
Yes, anything else for good stuff that... Back to the Chittenden watershed. I'm gonna get my tongue untangled here. How do we want to deal with the three companies that submitted some stuff? Do we want to meet with each one individually, or pick an order and...
Originally, I thought of just picking one, but now I'm thinking maybe it'd be better to meet with them.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Seems we just got this other one tonight. We want to try to do it one night, and allow them each, say, a half an hour, and...
Do a special meeting? Special meeting next week?
Special meeting would be good.
Or have a special meeting and do that, or...
That's what I'm thinking, is if we had a special meeting, we could have each of them come in and...
Yeah, wouldn't have a whole lot of...
From a timeframe.
Could be a shorter meeting. I think we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to be able to make a decision.
Yeah.
Hear them out, have questions answered, answer their questions.
Yeah, do you want to see whether you could come up with a...
Date?
Because I can't read these stuff.
Thursday this week?
Yeah, sign me up. What'd you say?
Thursday this week.
He said Thursday this week.
You're bringing the turkey, right?
Yeah.
Sometime next week, let me see.
See what they can...
Corral them all in the same day.
Not Tuesday, Wednesday, though.
Wednesdays are no good?
Not next week.
The other thing is, this is more than just a one-shot deal, because you may want to use them for other investments at some point in time.
Yeah.
Well, we can ask about the Peterson stuff, too.
And, you know, as I've talked before, you carry a million dollars in the checking We gain, we get 2% interest on it. Is there a better investment vehicle than leaving it in the checking account? Because we, you know, we don't, it's always, it's always there. And if we had a catastrophe, you might want to use half of it, and you might want to use part of it, but some portion of it could be invested all the time, because you're never, you're never going to need it on a cash flow basis.
Yeah. I think it'd be worthwhile, even though it's an extra effort, to have another meeting, but one meeting and try to iron it out without a whole lot of other stuff on our plate at the same time.
Works for me. I can do four any day next week.
Preferred day of the week?
You don't want Monday or Tuesday?
No.
Well, Vermont, peeling on Wednesday, and Tuesday, I'm...
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Monday, I'm fine Monday or Thursday, but if you guys have to do it, just go ahead. And I can be back. I can probably do Monday. Later.
And the time? Carrie, what's your schedule?
On Monday?
On almost any day, is there...
Oh.
Every day is different?
No, let's put it this way. If it was before five o'clock, I would have to get out of work early, which is fine. I just need to plan it. I'd prefer after five.
After five?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, we'll shoot after five, see if I can corral them for one day.
Yeah. Even if they join by phone, I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us have a problem with that.
No.
No.
Yeah, we've got our phones, so we can, if they couldn't get here for some reason. Be nice to have them face to face, but let's try to get some information.
I think all of them are showing an interest.
Okay, see what you can come up with, that'd be great. Stan?
Thanks, Stan.
Yes. Okay, front wall...
You skipped over something.
Yeah, we did.
Did I? Yeah. Oh, timber harvest projections.
I did not hear back from our forester as to what he thinks, the next sale, not the one that we're already into, but the one after that will bring, we can give you what the 10-year revenue stream would be.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm looking for now.
But the net for the next five years is $189,000, roughly.
Yeah, what's the one after that?
That's the question.
That's what I've asked him for.
Yeah. So maybe he'll have something for us, and...
I hope so.
Yeah, we can, you know, he can even send that out to us, rather than wait to have the information.
I can put it on the special meeting agenda, too.
Purchase and sales agreement. Do we want to get involved with that until we get further down the road?
I think that's a little premature yet.
Yes. Okay.
Yes. I just want to make sure I make clear what Mr. Gerlach's positions are when you talk about the purchase and sale agreement, and whether or not he's out there. You're talking with investment advisors about what to do with the one and a half million dollars. You don't have a purchase and sale agreement, you don't even know if you're going to end up with the terms that you're going to want to have, that you're going to come to an agreement. And I'm not sure your investment advisors, until you know, are you going to sell it, or aren't you going to sell it, are they going to be able to give you numbers on what your projections might be, or where things are? And Mr. Gerlach has said, if we're not sort of sitting down, I threw out to Stan today that Mr. Gerlach said if there was a letter of intent, that you would like to negotiate in good faith, he was prepared to put a non-refundable deposit of some money, so that we could begin discussions with the lawyer. If you are saying you're not going to do anything until after December 1st, and you're not sure what you're going to do, and you're going to take as much time as it takes, then Mr. Gerlach wants to make sure you totally understand that he will withdraw his offer, and there won't be anything out there to negotiate with. And it's totally up to you. He only wanted to be able to know whether or not he could buy it, if you wanted to sell it, and there was a business transaction. If it's something that you're thinking that you're six months out, nine months out, then we'd like to know it, so that he could make sure that when you finally decide that you want to sell it, he's not sitting there with a million and a half dollar offer that you guys should consider. You'll have to take a look at whether or not there are public entities that would want to buy it, what it would sell for, what you'd want to get, and what's there. You have Mr. Linholm saying that it may be worth a whole lot more, and you want to go through an appraisal process. If that's what you're going to do, I simply want to get direction from my client, so that he can decide what he should do. And it's not to put any pressure, it's not to, it's just the reality of what's there. It's much like if somebody comes and says they want to buy a house, you decide you want to sell it, or you don't want to sell it. If you say, "I don't want to sell it right now," then the person goes off, and they look at whatever they want to look at. And that's kind of where this is, and I'm unclear what message I'm getting, that this looks like there's real no direction, in a sense that you would want to sell it to Mr. Gerlach, and you may not have that for several months. And if that's what it is, then I'm supposed to indicate that he would like to then move on.
Well, I think this is a little different in the house sale. We hadn't even considered selling the property when Mr. Gerlach came to us.
Okay.
We didn't put it up for sale. He came to us, so, you know...
Well, I don't mean to put that, he asked whether or not there was an interest in selling it. He was told there was an interest in selling it. Do you want to make an offer? So he wanted to make a conversation. If he was told there's no interest in selling it...
We made an offer, sir, and we're considering it.
Right, and I'm not sure there's an interest in selling it, because there's a lot of, people are asking you to donate it, to give it to other public things. We're trying to figure out whether or not this is something that he wants to be engaged with, anyway.
So here's my confusion, my frustration, is in one breath, I hear, "We don't want to put any pressure on you," and the next breath, it's off the table as of December 1st. And we are still trying to figure out what money paid for this land.
Okay.
We are still trying to figure out if we can sell it. This is not a house transaction, this is selling a large piece of property. And it's not that I'm waiting for the biggest offer, it's not that I'm waiting for, I'm just trying to do my due diligence, as a member of this board, to figure out what the best course to make is. And to me, that's going to take some time. And I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't understand why you don't understand our point of view here.
I certainly can understand that you say you want to do your due diligence, and you say, "We're still going to think about whether or not we want to sell it." At that point, I'm not sure that Mr. Gerlach still wants to be able to give you a cash offer, or be interested in buying it. When you come to a conclusion, he will probably cross that bridge when he gets to it.
And Mr. Buehle, it's not whether or not we want to sell it, in some ways, it's whether or not we can sell it, and what the money can be used for. We're still trying to figure that... We're still trying to figure that out and we have been working hard and had special meetings.
No, I totally understand.
I'm saying we're coming from good faith, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, i- i- in terms of good faith, I just would point out if you had any contract provision that said you don't have the ability to sell it, then if you don't have the ability to sell it, then you can't sell it and it wouldn't be able to give us good title to it. So you'd be out of any kind of agreement. So that particular issue, you know, maybe it's just because I deal with real estate and contracts all the time, so I have a whole different proposal. I don't see that as an issue, I see all the right of ways as being what's there and how to deal with it. And whatever terms are there and if what you're saying, and that's fine, okay, there are just, here's what it is. If you're saying that you want four or five more months, which would be what I'm hearing people go through, then I need to take that back and my client will respond and do whatever he wants to do with it. What's on the table and what has clearly been said is he wanted to be negotiating in good faith, whatever terms you would want to have to see if he could come to an agreement. And if the terms that you want to have are things that he won't be able to live with, then you wouldn't be able to have a contract anyway. And we're wasting a lot of time and energy on something that may not happen. So, you know, uh, at this point, it appears to me that the board is not sure that it wants to sell the property, not sure under what terms it would want to sell the property, and wants to investigate whether it can sell it, what it can do with the money. And it's going to follow that particular procedure until you can have any conversation with any buyer or tell anybody what might happen with it.
Well, we met with him and I, and I think part of it is that Tom and I were able to meet with him. But we haven't yet as a board discussed that conversation or, you know, what was raised. So I think our perspective is, you know, do we want to sell it? Possibly. Um, can we? Yeah, definitely, we can, it's our property. Um, but we need to weigh, you know, all angles, like is the 1.5 million in our hands today the best thing for Proctor? For Proctor? And I'm not saying anything against Chittenden or Pittsburgh or anything, they're fine, they're our neighbors. But the main interest is our people and, you know, what we will do best for our, our town. Um, so we just want to weigh that, you know, will the timber help us through the years more so than just having that money invested? And that's what we want to look at, you know? And I think the turnaround on a lot of these questions can be quick. I don't think it's, could be five months, I think by then we definitely, I know I do, I want to make a decision one way or the other because I don't want to keep bringing this up every meeting and figure out what are we doing?
Well, then one thing on a purchase and sale agreement, because I know having elections or doing it and there was an expectation that there would be a petition of five percent people, so you'd have to have it at a town vote. And lots of times you want to have them at the town meeting so you can save on your costs and do that. And in order to have anything on the town meeting, it has to be warned X number of days before the town meeting. So if you add the thirty days that they have to file a petition, then you'd want to have a purchase and sale agreement. If you were trying to get to the town meeting to have the people vote on a town meeting, you would need to be doing something now. If that's not what your schedule is, well, that's not what your schedule is. So, I mean, that's, that's the only reason why I put that out there.
Right, well, there's a lot of logistics, but I, I think, and I'm only speaking for myself, I would like to see it move forward in some respect. What, no matter what the outcome is, just let's move forward and keep this, you know, keep it going quickly. Instead of just going, well, what should we do, you know, back and forth, because that's not going to help anybody. So I, I think once we can all talk and we can kind of figure out, you know, and hear back from all these people, you know?
Okay.
And I think he understands that, I felt like when we talked to him, he was fine with everything we said. He, he was settled in saying, okay, we understand, you have to get all your ducks in a row and I'm here and this is what, you know, and he was very upfront with us on what he was going to do and.
But one of the very nice things is the fact that we have a camera and he's able to watch all of the meetings. So he's able to see exactly what transpired and will be able, listening to your conversation. So for me to carry on a conversation with you, it's extremely helpful because then he can actually look at it, interact because he can't be here all the time. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else uh on that particular subject?
I have a couple of questions. I, I'm curious how the invest, investment firms were solicited.
Yes.
Yes, I'm curious how they were solicited. Did you put out a, a, an invitation or how did you select how, whatever investment firms you have in front of you? Because you haven't mentioned them by name. And since they're on the table, they're part of the public record, so you could mention them by name.
I guess I'll answer that one. Edward Jones, we're working with, um, two other retirement plan and the Peterson Fund, uh, community bank, uh, People's United, it's got the Proctor Trust Fund, they're familiar with us. Uh, the Community Foundation is a foundation that I'm familiar with, that I'm working with. No, they did not go out for a request for quotes. I selected three different types of firms, one a brokerage firm, one a bank and one a foundation. I think there's, the response we got are statements of qualifications. Uh, they are not detailed proposals. I think what the board did tonight was to interview them. But no, they did not go out for requests for proposals and I don't think there's a need to go out for requests for proposals.
When you meet with them, will they be in executive session or public session?
Public, I would think.
Yeah, probably gonna, the initial thing, yeah.
What, what would qualify it to be an executive session?
Maybe when we get down to talking uh more in-depth, the dollars and cents, investments and what have you.
After the interviews, any discussion that you had regarding the selection process could be done in executive session, especially if there are fees involved.
I, I am hopeful, because we were told at the last meeting, I think Carrie said it on a number of occasions, that a decision would be made about this issue this evening. And now we've circled back around to a special meeting. And unfortunately, maybe this meeting will be at a time when the average citizen, if they're interested, can attend. But unfortunately, you have a habit of holding special meetings at three o'clock in the afternoon, which dissuades and doesn't allow people to attend. Um, so, um, it seems like this issue is continually going on and on with the same questions um at every meeting and that answers haven't been, um, I'm not sure where you're doing your investigation about um who owns or how the property was obtained. I did a quick search today in archives upstairs. I haven't seen anybody here doing that, so I'm not sure at what point that is. I, I'm just hopeful that this conversation will continue in public session and more so at meetings like this. So if you're unable to attend, everyone has the ability to know what's taking place.
And I was under the impression we were voting on this watershed today. But, cause I also don't see a point of can, looking for an investment and that until we know if we're selling it. That's just my personal thing. I, that's why I came prepared today to vote, but if no one else is ready.
You would be comfortable voting tonight, yes or no, to sell this property to this person?
Not knowing how much our logging revenue could be or what these people could do for us.
Well, how do you, these people, it, it won't, where we invest the money has no pertinent part of whether we're going to sell it or we're not going to sell it. It's just a question, are we going to sell it or are we not going to sell it?
Now, I think to me personally, if somebody offers me 1.5 million dollars and I know I can invest that money and it's going to grow twice as much as a timber sale every year, then that's a strong factor to consider in terms of the town and potentially lowering some of the, um, you know, cost of living here.
So I guess we have to come up with like, when are we going to vote? When are, cause I happen to agree this is carrying on and on, now we're like a month into it and we still haven't gotten anywhere.
Well, part of the problem, I think too, and I've said this, I think the last meeting, is that these people we invite don't show up. You know, we invite people to come and explain to us their situation and they never show up. We have people from the town complaining about the sale, but they can't make it to a meeting.
Well, ag- agree.
Sorry, I don't want the sale to happen, but I can't be there. So, you know, I, whether we have the meeting at three, at six, some of these people just, I'm not going to show up.
It's, it's harder.
Yeah.
Or, or do we just not make a decision and ha, and ha, put it out for vote? Here are the facts.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have the facts yet.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we put it out for vote, it wouldn't be till town meeting, so.
Well, you could have a special one.
Yeah, I'd want to do it sooner than that.
The board can make a decision on selling it.
Oh, yeah.
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 But.
But there would be a special, I mean, we all know there would be a special town meeting and.
If the, if people objected to it only.
Well, there's a question there as to whether you want to make people circulate a petition or whether you just want to put it up for a vote.
Right, without going through that.
Without, without going through that hassle, because I, I'm, I think you can be sure there will be a petition.
Yeah.
All that will do is extend it out further.
Right.
They may not turn the petition in until the last minute.
I guess it's hard, it's, and that's the thing about being in a board, it's like, you know, we get information, you guys don't have that same information.
Mm-huh.
We can't talk unless we're all together. And it's like, okay, so, you know, what is everybody's major concern? What, you know, other than if, say, the 1.5 million is money in our pocket and it's going to grow over the years to really diminish other, you know, um, costs to us, then what is it that's choosing us not to go that way? What's causing us to stay and say, no, let's hold on to this timber property and, you know?
Well, I, I mean, to be honest with you, my concern is, and, and you've gotten to talk to Mr. Gerlach, which is great, but I mean, are, are we better off logging the land or are we better off with the money? And no one has been able to tell me really either way.
And, and I guess my question is too, where I'm kind of, a couple of things actually. Okay, so this is still, could be considered backup water, we don't know. So, you know, we're making a decision about the future that we don't know. So that kind of makes me hesitate to hmm decide to sell it because there's that part of me that says, this is a big commodity, this is a resource that we have in this town that benefits us. You know, my second part of it is about the recreation and it is about the fragmentation, which I find extremely important. And so that kind of has me scratching my head too, is, is that really a sound decision to sell or to, you know, I guess I don't have. I don't see a reason to sell, we weren't looking to sell. It's a resource. I just, I just don't feel comfortable selling it. But that's, that's my opinion and I haven't heard anything that changes my mind yet.
So basically, it's not the financial choice?
It's not about the financial choice, because it's not always going to be about the financial choice. Because maybe it is the financial choice, maybe years down the road, we have no water, we have no water source for clean water. Then we're going to have to spend all that money to get that.
But whether that would ever change, I mean, the state forced us to, to change. And I'm sure if we, I don't believe that's a, a source that we, we could afford to run a, a whole new six-mile pipeline and get the permits from the state. They said the water, it wasn't safe to drink, so we didn't have any choice other than to put another well into this aquifer and the, so I, I don't believe it's a source for the town. It could be a source for a smaller group of people, they might get it through the state. But I don't believe the state of Vermont is going to say all of a sudden, oh, you can use this now.
This is the same state that's left a card and a lot of crap.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would just also say, it, it's much easier to spin through 1.5 million dollars. And even when you speak to the investment firm and figure out what the investment is, whether you're going to put it in stocks, whether you're going to put in bonds, whether you're going to put in blue chip, high risk, low risk, what you're going to do, you're going to be paying someone a, a good chunk of change. But it's much easier to spin through the money than you have in your hand rather than with the forest and knowing what the forecast out is for the timber harvest and being able to plan for projects, which is what we, those who have come before us have done and those that come after us should have the ability to do. There is no guarantee with the stock market, anyone that has investments knows that. You win big, you lose big. So you own land, it's static and that land is going to regenerate itself just as it had, did before and that's why we continue to log that land.
Yes, Justin.
Just a, a quick statement, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. You need to find out if this land may be worth over two million bucks first. Skip those investment counselors until after you've done the appraisals. The appraisals are, you should have several people doing appraisals on different items here, not just one fellow local doing an appraisal. You need to know what your water's worth. Um, I have a feeling, if this was my property, I wouldn't sell it for less than two million. And then you go from there with your investments.
Want to buy it for two million?
I, I'm not against the town of Proctor selling the land. If I was sitting where the board of directors are right there, my thing is, who do you sell it to? That's the main thing. If you sell it to an individual, there's no guarantee they're going to be, the gates are going to be locked, how that land's going to be treated, what's going to be the result to the water, what's going to be the result to the wildlife, what's going to be the result to, to the people of Vermont? If you sell it to a public organization who will maintain it and, and guarantee access, you'll still get your money, but the people of Vermont and that, and everything that depends on that land will be better off. As was said before, this is not, this is not a dump truck or a front-end loader. This is a living organism that you have there. It's like selling your daughter or selling your grandmother, whatever it happens to be, it's a living organism. And, and the, what that land becomes is your responsibility. It's belonged to Proctor for a hundred and six years, a hundred and sixteen years. There's no hurry. If you sell it in five years' time, that's good, take the sim, timber resources. But if you can find a buyer that maintain it and then get, give public access, that land will just pay dividends for the people of Vermont and for the land itself. To me, it's not a dollars and cents thing. It can be sold, but it may take a little bit longer. But the future of that land is what you really want to think about.
Well, I'm just going to say, and I'm only saying this to fill you guys in, okay? I'm not advocating for anybody. Um, but when we met with him, he has owned land in Vermont for years, other places, okay? His family grew up here on a farm, he has land that's still there. He bought another plot of land, hasn't done anything with it. It's not like all these properties that he's owned for sixty years, I'll have wind turbines on it or solar panels on it or is subdivided for housing and stuff. Nothing's been done other than to maintain it for his use. So I'm just speaking so you guys know what he shared with us. So I'm just speaking so you guys know what he shared with us. Am I wrong in anything that I said?
No, no, that's exactly what he said.
All right, so I just wanted to share that so everybody has the same.
I share some counter to that. I spoke here as a resident of Proctor, but I could speak as a resident, as a member of Rutland County Autobahn for over 45 years. Unfortunately, we've dealt with this gentleman. And that's not the, that's not the experience we've had. We have an easement of like 40,000 acres, which he owns. And the people who gave it, who negotiated that easement with us was that we would have access to the birds of that land and to monitor it for any bad things that came to it if there was a timber harvest. Rutland County Autobahn now is being denied access to that land. I didn't want to speak about this gentleman, but that's been our experience.
And he said he's gonna keep everybody off that land. That's done.
Well, he said, he has an easement with Long Trail that he said he would.
He would honor that.
That's a nook up in the corner.
I don't know where it is.
I'd like to address the board just for a second to this gentleman. When the property changed hands, the Autobahn Association presented him with what they were gonna do, when they were gonna do it, with no concern for him as a new landowner. It was an uncomfortable letter and there are two sides to each story here. So Mr. Gerlach is all about conservation, doesn't want to develop it and it should be noted that he would be a good steward to the forest.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, do you think we should just have a, a public meeting and bring this forward so that we don't waste anybody more time? Because if we waste time going through with, you know, every, these investors and people keep coming out of, you know, the woodwork, saying, oh, I object because of this. I mean, we had somebody from town who said they do not want it sold, but why don't we reconsider subdividing it and selling it into lots?
Yeah.
So we have those people too in town, you know, like, okay, we don't wanna sell it 'cause the water and the birds and the environment and the trails, which I get, but let's, you know, I don't want it sold to this guy, but we could subdivide it and get a lot more money. So it's like, so we, it's just we have, I think we have too many opinions and ideas coming and if we just come to the conclusion, yeah, we're selling it, no, we're not, we're still gonna go through, like you said, it's gonna be elongated process, months out until we get everybody in town to put their, you know, their comments and stuff in.
I think we should bite the bullet and have a vote, spend the money.
I think we should too. I just think it, this is, this is not, this is a town property. It is not just like one single seller and one single buyer. So it makes it much more complicated.
If you went for a, a special town meeting with a generic warning, the generic being, shall the select board be authorized to sell the Proctor 1,600-acre Procter watershed for not less than 1.5 million, yes or no? Without answering any questions as to what you're gonna do with it? Just yes or no?
Right.
So it would just be a vote, they just go in and vote?
Vote yes or no, whether to sell it or not sell it. I mean, that's, that's one way of doing it. The other way is to complicate it by putting how you're gonna invest the money and how long you're gonna do it, et cetera, et cetera.
No, that would really.
It's just gonna muddy the waters. And then I believe that would, Mr. Mube, I think is looking for that, a yes or a no.
Yeah, yes, there's something that you should also know is that that vote would not negate the requirement when you did enter into a contract with somebody that if 5% of the people signed a petition, that you'd have to have another vote. It doesn't preempt the requirement of that because the only way you can convey the property with good title is that you have a contract. You have to provide notice. If 5% of the people come forward and ask for a vote on that contract, then it has to go up for vote again. So I just wanted to make sure.
Right, so it's just gonna belong, yeah.
You were aware of that, that's one of the advantages of, you have a contract, you can put the contract up. Do you wanna sell it under these terms or not? Yes or no? That gives something and that would take care of the title issue. The way you're talking about doing it just would require probably two votes. And I just.
I think we need an opinion as to whether it would require two votes or not. If the board was authorized to sell it, I don't think there is need to say, sell it to whom?
No, I think.
And again, I would, I, I don't know the answer to that. I will find that out.
Okay, good, okay.
Whether, if, the actual agreement would have to be, have a separate vote.
The only thing about a generic vote to me is that I feel like it's, it's never, there's no closure. People either go in and say, no, I don't want, without any understanding of the benefit it could be to the town or, you know, what the negative impacts are. So, I don't know, I just think people in a room at a meeting, being able to say yea or nay and throw up questions, put it to rest better than all of a sudden, you know, 60% vote no and then, okay, we can't sell it, but why? You know what I mean? Like, why don't they want us to sell it? Or why do they want us to sell it, something, I don't know.
I, I just wanna clarify, 'cause I, I don't know if I'm understanding this, but, I mean, it would be a special town meeting, so there would be a debate beforehand. There would be people saying what they thought either way and then we would, then we would recess and have a vote.
I thought he was just saying a vote. It's like you vote for.
You, you have to have an informational.
Yeah, so people would be able to speak, yeah.
To be at the same meeting, or you could hold one ahead of time if you wanna cut down the conversation. But you, but it would, I'm assuming this will be a floor vote. And then a floor vote, you know what happens at floor, you get discussion on the floor vote.
So people would be able to talk, they would be able to see what they're thinking.
Okay, yeah, okay, if that's the case.
And then we would vote and we would have an idea of what was going on.
'Cause you're, you're gonna end up having it anyway.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah.
It's not a yea or nay, it's a show of hands too.
If seven people request a show of hands.
Yes, rather than loud voices.
Or a, a paper vote, because there may be people there who don't want to raise their hand, yes or no.
I think a paper vote would be.
Yes.
Seven people ask for a paper ballot and you get a paper ballot.
Well, let's check with our lawyer.
Two things, one is whether is a floor vote versus a Australian ballot. And two is whether, if you voted a generic, do you need to go back again?
Yes.
And sooner rather than later?
Yes, I would do.
Clarification, what would be the, the vote that you're voting on? How would, how would the proposition be?
How would the question be worded?
What did, what did the question?
That has not been finalized, but my, my thoughts are, my thoughts are, not necessarily the board's, is it would be very generic to the point of, shall the select board be authorized to sell the 1,600-acre Chittenden property for an amount not less than 1.5 million? How they sell it is up to the select board.
Or when they sell it.
What?
Or when they sell it.
Or when they, no.
No, if, just if.
They would be authorized to sell it whenever they felt, if they wanted to sell it, they could sell it.
And, and the citizens would still have the opportunity to petition?
You can always petition a vote.
Well, I think that, I think that's the piece that you missed when you started about the two votes. That if you can vote that.
No, what Bill was talking about was voting on the actual contract.
I'm sorry, okay, 'cause he also spoke.
But yes, you can, you can vote for re, for a revote if you follow.
No, not a revote, but to petition, if they do sell, you still have the right to petition for sale.
What, what I am thinking, and I can stand to be corrected, is if you have a special town meeting and you vote either yes or no to sell the property on a generic basis, the voters have 30 days to ask for a revote of the same article. So it would be the same question would be on the table. The question that Bill raised was if they gave an eye to the generic sale of property, would the actual individual contract have to go back for a revote? And that's the question I don't have the answer for and that's the one that I will find out.
It, it does seem though, leaving it open ended a bit much. It would seem like even with the question, if, if that's going to be your question, there should be a five-year or three, a five-year timeline on it rather than leaving it open.
Let's talk with our attorney and.
The question is whether you wanna proceed in this direction or do you wanna proceed in the direction that Ben was looking at of the economic comparison?
Let's get a sense from the.
Find out what the town wants to do?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Also, I think we should find out what the town wants to do. I think that's the.
Let's get a sense from.
Diligent, due diligence would be done then.
Townspeople, taxpayers and.
But you will have to answer some questions at the public here, a public meeting.
Well, and, and so between now and then, we could be getting our.
You could, you could.
I was asking about, which is, what is the cost benefit analysis?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've got another, probably at least 30 days to, to do that.
You mean, hold a town meeting in 30 days?
Yeah, that's a warning.
Warning.
Well, wait, no, it's time, time out. We're still asking Alan whether or not there will be a second vote. So we got another week besides that, I mean, this is.
Yeah, I mean, at your regular, next regular meeting, we would have an article prepared for a special town meeting. And you can debate the article and reform it however you wanna reform it. At the same time, I think going through and interviewing the investment firms and selecting one, because somebody's gonna ask you the question, what are you gonna get for your 1.5 million over the next 50 years?
Well, they have that in their back pocket.
So if we are asked about getting another survey, another assessment of that land, what is the answer going to be? Is that something that we are going to consider to get it surveyed and get a?
Be another appraisal?
An appraisal, yes.
When was the last one done?
2015. And that was a so-called fair market value at that time. Did not take into consideration any of the items that may have been brought up regarding water usage or the new, the new one that came in today, which you have in your packet, of mitigation. That if somebody wanted to put in wind turbines in East Overshue, New Hampshire, or East Overshue, Vermont, they could come down to Proctor and buy mitigation for their project. And how much does that work? I mean, that's, that's, that's getting into a specialized type assessment rather than just a real estate assessment. It's, it's kinda like your contract to do an evaluation on the.
Power station.
Green Mountain Power Station, power station. It's a specialist type person to do it.
Certainly would want Alan there at our next meeting so that we can.
Discuss the article and rewrite it if you have to.
So we don't put that off for another week or two.
So this would, conversation would take place, I'm sorry, at a special meeting or in a regular meeting? The Stan's saying a regular meeting, you're saying a special meeting?
You said our next regular meeting.
Yeah.
I said your next regular meeting. To have an article prepared.
Right.
Sent out with the agenda ahead of time or sent out as soon as we have it prepared.
And we should get our questions answered before that.
Right.
Yeah.
So you'll get the amount from the forester too?
Yep. We're gonna try, you, you select a consultant next week?
Right, yep.
Yeah.
And I badger Andy to see what the, what, what he thinks the next harvest will be after this one we're onto now. And that, then that'll give you as a 10-year revenue.
All right.
Okay.
This one enough, I'm waiting.
Yes.